Welcome certainly to our, it's actually quarterly, our quarterly morning discussion sessions. And today we're going to hear about youth violence issues. And this group, I was actually thinking driving down here today, commissioners basically have been blessed in that we've had some, we have some resources. We've had some federal resources substantial through the American Rescue Plan Act. We certainly have our annual JCPC funds and we have local funds tied up and certainly that go via through the school as well as directly certainly to the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office. So there are a lot of resources that we are, even if we don't control, that we do control where some of the ARPA money goes and we're controlling some, we approve the JCPC grants. And so I think all of us, I think all of us feel a little sense of urgency to kind of work on this. And I did read all 159 of the slides that we have today. And as I went through those, I really was struck by Rob Lang's comments about, you know, perhaps the time is now. And I think that's part of the, you know, we do have some, some resources. We do have motivation. We have some serious issues we're trying to address, have some resources. And I think we have actually of the groups that are participating, some pretty good working relationships and cooperation. Nothing is ever perfect and we, the tendency for silos among agencies is hard to avoid. And certainly you can't ever completely break that down because it's not all, if you do, it's one organization. And that, we don't have that. So I think today is one of, we certainly look forward to listening, but I, we are a little sensitive to time. And I think as Chantel Robinson, our Deputy County Manager told me, she was pretty clear on the 20 minutes. And I do have a timer and I can, I can stop us on the 20 minutes. And then I thought I'd give a sort of five minutes for a few questions. And since I am usually the worst violator of asking lots of questions, that means I will try to, try to discipline myself on that. And at the moment, I think we have Commissioner Plotters online, Commissioner Limmel cannot be here today. But I think we will get probably a couple more folks in and we'll get going. But I think we'll all try to keep our, our questions in line. And so I've really allotted 25 minutes, 20 minutes for you, five minutes for questions. And we're going to try to go with that. So I've already used up probably three or four minutes. So I know that Chantel is going to introduce each group and I appreciate the work she has done in assembling not only this group, but in supporting basically all these endeavors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning Commissioners. In the fiscal year 2024 adopted budget, staff was directed to facilitate a board discussion and review of current programs to reduce violence and crime in Forsyth County, particularly among youth, and to provide an update on evaluation methodology that tracks measures and outcomes. Today, we will be discussing several initiatives that Forsyth County is involved in. In no way does this reflect all of the work that's being done in the community to address youth violence. There are many grassroots organizations, law enforcement initiatives by both city police and the sheriff's office. And thank you to Chief Penn, I know he's in the back listening to this presentation and the sheriff will be here as well. The Winston-Salem Gang Steering Committee and other entities that are working hard each day and in their own way to address the challenges that our community faces. Today, we will highlight the work of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Forsyth Wins, which stands for Forsyth Winston-Salem Interventions for Nonviolent Streets, which is our local cure violence program, the Sheriff's Office Juvenile Intervention and Investigation Team, better known as JIT, and Project Safe Neighborhoods Safe Winston-Salem Forsyth County Youth Initiative. So first up is an update from Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. We cannot have a conversation about youth violence without getting the perspective of our public school system. They play an integral role and partner with all of the organizations that are here today, as well as many others. Deputy Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Fabi Williams, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, Dr. Frederica Stokes, and Director of Behavior Support and Intervention, Ms. Shannon Dobson are here to present.
Good morning, respective Commissioners. My name is Fabi Williams and I serve as Deputy Superintendent of Schools for Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. At Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, we want to ensure that all of our students are future ready. As we envision the future, it is imperative that we equip all of our students with the skills, knowledge, and resilience necessary to navigate an ever-changing landscape. The world they will inherit demands adaptability, critical thinking, and a deep commitment to social responsibility. Through our Code of Character Conduct and Support, we empower our students with the tools to address conflict constructively. Effective communication, conflict resolution skills, and an understanding of the power of dialogue can be powerful antidotes to the poison of violence. Through our code, we ensure our students are equipped with the emotional intelligence to navigate disagreements and differences peacefully. Through our social-emotional learning work, we aim to foster a culture of empathy and understanding. By cultivating an environment where diversity is celebrated and differences are embraced, we create a foundation upon which violence struggles to thrive. Our educational institution must be strongholds of tolerance, where students can learn not only from textbooks, but from each other's unique perspectives and experiences. I'm proud to say that with the help of our community partners and district programs, 88% of our students have not received a disciplinary referral this school year. For the 12% who have received referrals, we offer restorative programmings to ensure their success as well. Our students are doing great things and we will work each day to ensure that they have a safe environment to continue to thrive peacefully. I would like to introduce Dr. Frederica Stokes, our Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, Shannon Dobson, and our Director of Behavior Support and Interventions, who will be giving you more information about our Code of Conduct and other programs our district offers. We also have our lead care team member here, Ms. Antoinette Moore, who will be available to answer any questions in reference to the work that they're doing. So at this time, if this, with your permission, I'd like to ask them to come up.
Good morning. I'm Shannon Dobson. I'm the Director of Behavior Support and Intervention. I have the pleasure of serving our district. I've been a member here for 21 years. And so I'm going to just kind of bring us into what Dr. Williams spoke about in terms of what we're doing with our Code of Character Conduct and Support. As you know, our district really took on a pathway to look at how we are not only responding to students' needs, but first and foremost, making sure that we are creating environments that empower, inspire, and engage, laying that foundational framework that our school environments are places where we are promoting and also preventing behavior and that nature, and also providing an opportunity that when unskillful behavior presents itself, not only is there an accountable consequence, but there is a restorative intervention to support those students. That when unskillful behavior happens, that we know that that needs, that means that there's a skill that we need to respond to. And so we have provided our Code of Character and Conduct here. There's a bitly link that if you wanted to flip through it and all its beauty, it is a really nicely laid out document that not only explains students' rights, parents' rights, the adult rights, and then how we are kind of standardizing our norms and operating procedures as a school system. And all of that is done under the framework of what Dr. Williams also mentioned with our portrait of a graduate, how we are ensuring that our students are future-ready, that they're going into the environment's post-secondary world with the skills necessary to collaborate, to be in engagement and relationship with others as they navigate the world after their 12th grade education. So within our Code of Conduct, first and foremost, we lay that framework, like I said, as standardizing that learning environment and creating pro-social and preventative efforts. And we do that through what we call the three-legged stool. And what that really just means is we're looking at classroom management, we're looking at classroom instruction, and we're looking at classroom discipline. I think we can all agree that environments where we are engaged in as learners, then we're going to see less behavior. Environments where students have voice and choice, we're going to promote that they're inside the classroom where learning is happening rather than outside that classroom. And also, we're empowering our teachers with being first responders. We want to get them to be able to notice the signs of unskillful behavior early on and be able to respond to that in a way that is empowering to the student, whether it's through depersonalization with them or de-escalating the situation, or making sure that we're getting them in connection with the supports that are available within our schools. And so we do that in our framework too, that we look at this through tiers, how we're promoting and preventing, but then also how we are responding with supplemental supports and intensive interventions. So ensuring that kids that need more support, we're layering that support outside the classroom, whether that means intensive interventions through social skills grouping. And Dr. Stokes is going to speak more about our mentorship programs within our school context. So some of the things that we've done early on to support all staff members in this initiative is really looking at how we're building environments that promote that pro-social behavior. And so this is a look at what we've done for our syllabus and how we're educating our adults. Because first and foremost, our adults have to understand behavior from, from that level in order to be able to implement it in their school-wide systems in their classroom. So just taking a look broadly overviewing that, some of the things that we have been working on through professional development are just how we are establishing ourselves and greeting students in the morning, making sure that everybody has a personal connection and able to, to respond to a student. How we're responding through behavior check-ins, so meaning that the moment that I see an off-task or unwanted behavior, I'm immediately leaning into that to figure out where that student is and perhaps other supports that they may need. We're also collaborating and making sure that we're engaging through in our instructional services because you can't separate behavior and academic needs. Those two go together. Wherever there's a behavior need, you also have needs for academic supports when we're looking at instruction. So we're doing that collectively and collaboratively with our, our district-level staff, but then also by training schools. And so this is just an overview of what those strategies look like across that three-legged stool as they're divided from classroom management to classroom instruction. So the ones that are highlighted are all ones that so far we have taught through the course of last year. And then we're continuing that this year through, you know, understanding that you always need to reset and reemphasize those pieces, and we're adding new strategies across the school year. So in addition to just promotion and prevention, we're also looking at restorative interventions because we believe that not only is there an accountable consequence, but there's also the opportunity to restore. We want students to understand that although I may engage in unskillful behavior, there is opportunity in the true meaning of discipline to learn from that. And so as a school district, we have delivered professional development to all of our student services staff, which include our counselors, social workers, nurses, psychologists, and even our assistant principals because they are responding to discipline on a daily basis. And so what that looks like has been in the form of re-entry conferences. So we know that when there is a suspension or a need of removal for school, that we're facilitating conferences that are bringing that, that student back into the, into the building and helping support them to avoid repeated suspensions. In addition to that, we're looking at how we reset. So if I have to be removed from the classroom, what does that look like for transitioning me back in? Because the goal is hopefully not to move into that suspension, but perhaps some time to reset, to bring you back in and empower you through self-management and by managing your emotions or regulation and demonstrating that through resilience. And Dr. Stokes now is going to come up and speak specifically about extension of school prevention and intervention programs that we're doing.
Good morning Commissioners. My name is Frederica Stokes. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. And I have the pleasure of working each day with stakeholders who are interested in making sure and invested in making sure that all of our students are future-ready. To stay in line with our timeline of 20 minutes, I've only highlighted a few of the programs today. These programs are levers that we're using to reduce violence within our schools. So the first program I'll share with you is our mentor programs. Over the last three years, we have invested, we have invested in having mentor programs. Research has shown that mentoring can serve in both prevention and intervention roles in addressing youth violence. Positive mentor relationships can change the trajectory of a youth's life. It can change them from going around risky behaviors and violence to actually opportunities just by having one adult in their life to mentor them. Over the past three years, we have invested in having mentors in our schools to connect with some of our youth. We currently have 15 part-time mentors in six of our schools who are working directly with some of our youth who are at risk for participating in risky behaviors. Those 15 part-time mentors, they serve Mount Tabor, Parkland, Reynolds, Philo Hill, Mineral Springs, Middle, and Paisley. Our principals at those schools, our teachers and students have seen the value of having those mentors in their schools. They continue to build positive relationships with their mentees and other stakeholders in the building. They're often working with our teachers, working with our students, and they have oftentimes prevented violent acts from occurring within the school just by knowing the student, knowing the student's community that they're living in and the student sharing information with them has prevented violence from occurring. Another program we have is our Save Promise Club. Every middle and high school in our district have Save Promise Schools. This is Students Against Violence Everywhere Promise Clubs. These clubs, these clubs are led by our youth within our schools and they're encouraging others within the school building to take charge of keeping their friends, their school, and their community safe. Our students, they are learning from each other. They've created how to create an inclusive environment. They've also participated in activities. They've been to leadership conferences in Raleigh, and they're scheduled for another one in April to learn about how do we promote kindness, how do we have an inclusive culture, what is the youth role in making sure that our schools are also safe. Also, through this club, we have also implemented our Say Something app. This is where students can report any tips of violence or if they're afraid someone may harm themselves. They often go into that system and they will report anonymously. And our staff follow-up, they work with the students, they work with the staff that are involved in the report to make sure that our schools are safe. And so that Save Promise Club is in all of our middle and high schools. Our extracurricular activities, what can I say? When our students feel like they have a sense of belonging, when they're involved in extracurricular activities, not just sports, but we're looking at our arts, our band, our clubs. When we see those students involved in those activities, very few of them are involved in violent acts. And so our extracurricular activities is a really big help of making sure that our students are in a safe environment before school and after school with different activities. And so we found that our extracurricular activities in really making sure and really pushing for our students to be involved in at least one club, one organization in their school so that they can feel that sense of belonging goes a long way. Peer mediation, we have implemented peer mediation in all of our middle schools. Our students are very smart and they can solve a lot of their problems on their own before it even gets to us. We have worked with Triad Restorative Justice to train all of our middle school counselors and select students in each of our middle schools on how to become a peer mediator. Our students are so smart, like I said, and oftentimes they, they just solve their own problems. We have really programs that are flourishing at Philo, Clemmons, and Mineral Springs. Those programs are really taking off within their school community with our students serving as peer mediators. Our community partnerships, what can I say? We can't do anything without our community partners. We recognize that as a school district, we cannot do this work alone. We partner and refer students to many community partners. Many of those individuals are here today and will be presenting also. We collaborate and we refer our students with substance abuse concerns to Insight Human Services. We work directly with Triad Restorative Justice, Parenting Path, Family Services, and YWCA, just to name a few. We also work closely with our law enforcement partners like the JIT team. And we also have been working recently with the Project Safe Neighborhood Initiative. We had a resource fair in January and we are planning our upcoming resource fair that will focus on JCP programs. As a district, we are committed to increasing the referrals that we're making for our students and families to our community organizations. And it starts with awareness. And so the resource fairs have been very key in increasing referral programs. Who does the work? All of our wonderful student services staff, our teachers, our principals, and our administrators. But I do want to highlight the support that is needed for academic, social, and emotional needs of our students. As Ms. Dobson stated, all of our student services staff, they are being trained in restorative practices and trainings so that they can understand how to address violence, how to address behavior issues that are going on within the schools. So our school social workers and counselors and our nurses, all of those individuals listed here play an integral part in making sure that we have the mentors in our schools. Some of them actually serve as mentors. And last but not least, I could not come here today without mentioning our CARES team. Antoinette Moore is here, and I also saw two other individuals, Joelle and Cynthia. They're both here and they're our CARES team members. And just to share a little bit about the CARES team, this team of seven individuals, they're small, but they're mighty. These individuals provide wraparound support and services to our school's students and families. Oftentimes, sometimes we cannot get in contact with families, the social workers, the counselors. They've tried and they haven't been able to get in contact. They reach out to their designated CARES team member and those individuals are boots on the ground. They hit the ground running. They have participated with dropout prevention at the beginning of the year and throughout the year. Any student who was dropped out of school, we're referring them to them. The CARES team go out, they're locating, helping to locate those students. Not only locate those students, they work with the families. They do over 50 visits a week to various families to make sure that if they're in need of any resources or any supports, they go out and provide dropout prevention services so that we can get students in school and get them graduated. Chronic absenteeism, we have seen improvement this school year in absences, in the number of students who are chronically absent. We're seeing that decrease, which is really good. So we're seeing our students get back in. We have seen, we saw a drop in attendance as it relates to COVID and that drop was seen across the entire state. And so our CARES team have focused in on chronic absenteeism also. They go out, if we cannot locate a student, if they're absent, they're working directly with those families. They're in the communities to bring them in. They do a lot of family engagement work with the schools, helping them have events sponsored for families, not just in the schools, but in the community. Mentorships, they have mentored a lot of our students. They have started mentor programs in our elementary schools also. And then our technology support, we still have two virtual academies for our elementary, middle, and high school students. And when they need technology support, they're in the homes. They'll go right out, help them, help the student, help the family, determine what is the concern, what is the technology that is needed for them to continue their education. And so two of those individuals are dedicated directly to working with those particular schools. And community partnerships, oh my goodness, they provide a lot of partnerships. They connect, they provide food to families, gift cards, gas cards, whatever they need. Our CARES team is very resourceful and those individuals go right out. I think that's the other question.
We've just got a couple of minutes left for questions and I just only have one comment. I appreciate your presentation. One comment is, it's a matter of keeping up with results. And the last thing, when you mentioned chronic absenteeism, reducing that, take that group. What kind of success are you having over by quarter, by year, you know, some kind of number issues? And clearly referrals to juvenile system within the court system. I mean, there is a piece of that, suspensions you obviously measure, roles of resource officers, roles of the school district, there are a couple of issues in those things. So I'd encourage you to work on a couple of data points. Sounds like a great plan. Fair amount of staff, fair amount of money. The question is, how's it working? But anyway, other questions that we have.
So I do want to thank the school system team for coming to present to us today because in all fairness to our children, if we're not proactive with education, then we're reactive with law enforcement. And I hope that we understand as adults today that this is technically what it's about today. And I think the strategy behind bringing the public school system in our conversation today was about as adults, we are thinking strategically for our children so that they have a fair chance at being safe, happy, and whole in Forsyth County. And so I appreciate all of the work that the school system is doing to try to prevent any juvenile issues. The school, of course, spend so much time with our children and really without the standardized socialization of how we work with our children, it's no telling what our children would be doing out here in our community. I specifically want to ask you about the CARES team piece because we do, I do know that it was started in response to COVID. So how do you think the CARES team has enabled you to support making sure that the children that so many of us lost across the state have been able to return to our schools?
Well, they've been an integral part of that work.
determine what is the concern, what is the technology that is needed for them to continue their education. And so two of those individuals are dedicated directly to working with those particular schools. And community partnerships. Oh my goodness, they provide a lot of partnerships. They connect. They provide food to families, gift cards, gas cards, whatever they need, our CARES team is very resourceful and those individuals go right out. I think that's...
We've got time. We've just got a couple of minutes left for questions and I just only have one comment. I appreciate your presentation. One comment is, it's a matter of keeping up with results. And the last thing, when you mentioned chronic absenteeism, reducing that, take that group. What kind of success are you having over by quarter, by year? You know, some kind of number issues. And clearly referrals to juvenile system within the court system. I mean, there is a piece of that. Suspensions you obviously measure. Roles of resource officers, roles of the school district. There are a couple of issues in those things. So I'd encourage you to work on a couple of data points. Sounds like a great plan. Fair amount of staff, fair amount of money. The question is, how's it working? But anyway, other questions that we have.
So I do want to thank the school system team for coming to present to us today because in all fairness to our children, if we're not proactive with education, then we're reactive with law enforcement. And I hope that we understand as adults today that this is technically what it's about today. And I think the strategy behind bringing the public school system in our conversation today was about, as adults, we are thinking strategically for our children so that they have a fair chance at being safe, happy, and whole in Forsyth County. And so I appreciate all of the work that the school system is doing to try to prevent any juvenile issues. The school, of course, spend so much time with our children and really without the standardized socialization of how we work with our children, it's no telling what our children would be doing out here in our community. I specifically want to ask you about the CARES team piece because we do, I do know that it was started in response to COVID. So how do you think the CARES team has enabled you to support making sure that the children that so many of us lost across the state have been able to return to our schools?
Well, they've been an integral part of that work. As I indicated, during the summer, they're out in the community. They already know a lot of the community members. They know a lot of our students. And so the CARES team will go out to churches. They'll go out to many different community locations to actually help and assist locate. So they have helped us find many students across our district. And when we're looking at our attendance, our chronic absenteeism numbers, which is decreasing, though they are an integral part of that. They go out, they are working with families to support their students. If the family says, we don't have A, B, and C, they're coming back and they're connecting them with resources within the community. And so the CARES team is an integral part of the work, integral part of us being able to reduce the number of students who are dropping out of school and increasing student attendance. Because when we're missing one or two days, they are on the forefront of going out and helping to support the schools.
And the last question I have is, to have you confirm or correct what I think I have heard, at least from one of the principals, where CARES team members have been requested to come to schools to try to reconcile some of the issues that are in our, especially middle and high schools around violence, quote unquote, gang participation and those kinds of things, is what I have heard as it relates to principals asking CARES team members to come to their schools?
Absolutely. And also, if there's a student that's having a behavior concern, they oftentimes call them to come and they connect with those students too. They're not just working with families. They're also working with individual students also. And so correct, that has occurred, which does reduce violence also within our schools and behavior concerns. They've come, they've mentored, they've stayed with students and worked with them throughout the day. Students that may have struggled behaviorally and just their presence being there and working with the student one-on-one has been extremely helpful.
Thank you.
Another quick, we're, go quick. Ambesley.
Sticking with the CARES team for the moment. You mentioned there were seven individuals. We've got over 55,000 students. Do you have a waitlist for assistance? Or is there a backlog of situations where they're trying to reach?
Well, they, I think seven, you're right. I mean, the numbers, we have 52,000, 54,000 students in our district. And so not necessarily a waitlist of students. They always try to make sure that if they're called upon, they're responding. And then if students need resources and supports, the CARES team also refer out. And so any student that needs any additional supports, we work with them from that standpoint. We do a lot of referrals if the family's in need of, you know, housing or clothing and things of that nature. So not necessarily a waitlist, but they do refer out to get additional supports.
To resources within the system or in the community or both?
Both, both.
And just a quick question. You referenced Project Safe Neighborhoods and not familiar with the name?
Yes, they're going to be presenting right after. They're here.
They're presenting last today.
Yep, and they can talk a little bit more about the program and the four schools that they're working with.
Thank you.
Chairman, let me make this quick. Okay, thank you. I didn't know. Well, she'll need to come back. My question is relative to Carver High School. I didn't hear that they were part of the mentoring program. And I'm thinking, right? So in my mind, I'm thinking about the restorative intervention programs or opportunities that you have out there. And hopefully those individuals that are listening, the court system and the justice systems, our police force is here as well. And how does all of that work for those individuals once they've been sentenced? And then how do you help them with workforce development for the future and getting jobs moving forward?
You're saying once they've been sentenced?
Sentenced, yeah.
Okay. And so we work with students in a number of ways. So one is if they have been sentenced or if they haven't, if they're within our schools, we're working to find out, one, if they're at the high school level, what is your interest? And so our school counselors are working with them to align, even our middle school counselors doing career interest inventories and things of that nature, to align the courses that they're taking with whatever their career aspirations are. So whether they've been incarcerated or not been incarcerated, we're working with them from that standpoint. What is your interest? And we're trying to connect them with courses that they're interested with in careers. We partner with Forsyth Tech Community College to help connect our students to colleges and universities. But also, we have an excellent career technical education program where they're working, Ms. Kim Forbes, where they're working to make sure that they're connected with careers of their choice, if the community college or four-year university isn't the option. Carver definitely has a lot of resources. And I'll be honest, Carver is one of our model schools for our code of character, conduct, and support. And when I say model school, it doesn't mean it's perfect, but it means that that's our school where we're going into and we're working and providing additional resources as it relates to the code of conduct, character, and support. So that principal was just there yesterday for additional training. We're talking about mindsets. We're talking about how do we support students with behavior concerns? So Carver definitely have resources and supports. They have built-in mentor programs within Carver also. That's not one of the 15 ones that we've hired to work there. But Carver High School definitely have those resources and supports. They work a lot with our, some of our mental health programs that we have throughout the district. They work with Alexander Youth Network and they have also a mentor program within, at Carver High School. But they are doing a lot of extra work at Carver as it relates to being a model school for the district so that we can go in and look at the practices that they're doing to reduce behaviors within the schools.
Dr. Stokes.
That's pretty fair.
Thank you.
That's pretty fair. Thank you.
Good. Let me just refresh our, we're not doing very well on the time part and I'm not doing a very good job on my timekeeping, I don't think. We did use the five or six minutes at the beginning to start, but we've actually asked everyone for a 20-minute presentation and allotted five minutes for questions. And I'm going to do my very best and I will not, I promise not to ask a question for the next couple. I promise that. So to try so we can control our questions. So Chantel's going to introduce our next group. I'm going to push her 20-minute button.
Thank you. So next up, we will have information from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety and they will provide some data that shows some of the offenses that are taking place in the community by juveniles, which also helps inform decisions that are being made as it relates to programming that is currently funded by the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, better known as JCPC, to address youth violence. The commissioners approve funding for JCPC programs in the amount of $940,852 each year. Department of Public Safety's Piedmont Area Consultant Rich Smith, Chief Juvenile Court Counselor Dan Emerson, and Juvenile Court Counselor Supervisor, who also serves as our JCPC Chair, Keith Brown, are here today.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for inviting us to be able to talk about some of the things that we're doing in juvenile court. There is a ton of data, as y'all have seen in your PowerPoints. And I'm going to walk through there quickly. If you have specific questions about the complaints that are going to juvenile court or the Youth Assessment Screening Instrument, the YAZI data, Dan and Keith are much more eloquent in responding to those questions. But I'm going to go ahead and start moving us through. I'm Rich Smith, area consultant assigned to Forsyth County. Offense information. This is offense information for year-to-date. So you're able to see the level of violent offenses, serious offenses, and minor offenses. You can see about 70, around 70 or 73% are minor offenses. I'll talk a little bit, a bit more about how we're trying to address those when we get a little deeper into the presentation.
Rich, remind us, juvenile, for the definition of juvenile with respect to this data?
Yeah, anybody between the ages of really six to 17 for our JCPC programs, for juvenile court-involved population. We've raised the age, so it's 10 to 17. But we can also work with some offenses for eight, nine-year-olds that are serious offenses.
And these are all court-involved? So this is everything that happens in the school? It what, or in the community, it's what bubbles up through?
Right. Yes, we had about 600 youth that came. Complaints were filed with juvenile court. And this is information, when we see the YAZI information, you're going to see that there's 333 was the number of youth that that information represents. And those are those most serious offenses that we weren't able to divert or to close those cases because of the nature of those offenses. Year-to-date, we've seen 1,478 youth. This is through end of November. Those distinct juveniles were 632. It's real consistent with last year's numbers so far. School-related offenses, of those 1,400, 639 of those. The decisions for approved, those are approved to go on juvenile court. We can divert those cases. We'd like to divert as many cases as we can. We close cases. When you can see the difference between this year and last year, we closed a lot of cases this year. And part of that was because we only had five court counselors. We had two folks doing intake. And our intake takes a long time. So a lot of those cases were, they closed, they reviewed the case, they met with the family and they said, we're going to close this case and here's appropriate referral source. And they would refer them to a service anyway. Non-school-based offenses. We wanted to break, Chantel wanted us to break it down into non-school-based offenses and school-based offenses. These are going to be the most serious offenses. When you look at those, you can see that, sorry, I need my glasses. Discharging a firearm into a property in operation, thus felony stolen vehicles, the possession of handguns, breaking and entering. You're going to see these most, these are the most serious offenses. Most of our felonies are going to be based in the community and not in our schools. Carrying a weapon. You can see the number of complaints that came in for those offenses. When we move on to school-based complaints, I thought it was important for you to see the definition for what we consider to be school-based complaints. The school-based complaint represents a juvenile status offense that occurs on school grounds, school property. Could include buses, school bus stop, off-campus for school-sanctioned events, athletic activities, or youth that, who's a victim in a, in a school. And it's not just for Forsyth County schools. This information is just not for Forsyth County schools. So you can see that it's any public or private institution providing elementary K through 12 or secondary. Post-secondary, some offenses occur on college campuses that affect a juvenile and that is a school-based offense. So there's that definition that's going to be, that we apply to this next information. School-based complaints. As you see, these complaints are very different than the complaints we just saw for non-school-based offenses. We see simple assault, simple affray, disorderly conduct, communicating threats, possession of a weapon. So it seems like there's behavioral issues. There's, I think during COVID, when our youth have come back to the classroom, they have forgotten how to play well with them, play well with each other. I think I called it, they don't play in the sandbox well. They come back, we're seeing more anxiety, more frustration, more aggression. We see a lot of aggression. And the schools are, they're seeing that because the school system sees all youth. The schools, they see all the youth in our community. So you're seeing a lot, it's either drugs or aggressive behavior is primarily what we're seeing in these, these numbers. This is school-based defense complaints breakdown over the last three years. This is our school justice partnership information. It's on our department's website. So we're looking at three years of data. And so this shows the, how many felony offenses occurred in 2022, 23, 63 infractions, the infraction of the local law. Misdemeanors was 515. So you're seeing the majority of those offenses that are occurring on school grounds are misdemeanors. And I am going to speed through some of these because I am behind on my schedule. Those approved for cases, approved only of those offenses in that prior screen, there's almost 600 cases. 99 of those were approved for court. We closed the majority, closed the majority of those and diverted. So we're trying to divert those youth away. The more we can divert a youth away from the juvenile justice system, the less likely they're going to stay in that system. That's why it's important to work with our schools and our community partners to reduce that and our sheriff's department. Breakdown by race. You can see there's an over-representation of minorities for our school-based offenses. And that also is representative for those youth that go on to juvenile court. So we're seeing an over-representation there. And so part of our diversionary options are going to be trying to, we're working with the schools. We've already met with the schools, school student leadership team. We've already met with them to go in and say, hey, how can we better educate your, your, your school staff so they can make referrals directly to it? We've already met with the captain, the SROs, Captain Ammons, to make sure that the SROs are making those. So we're trying to divert those kids before they ever come to juvenile court. There's the breakdown by gender for the last couple of years. Not a surprise, it's a majority males. There's the breakdown for ages. And one of the things in our discussions with the schools, one of the things they said is they have a, they have a gap in service for elementary school kids. You're going to see that when, if you look at our request proposals, that's on the county website, list advertising for services for next year. You're going to see that we're moving some of those services to the front end of the system because we need to start working, have those diversionary options for schools and law enforcement. But elementary school kids are right in there. It's a relatively low portion of school-based offenses, but it's primarily middle school and high school. This is our YAZI information. So this shows, this is conducted for any youth that comes in for juvenile court. We do a full YAZI when they're approved for court. You can see, majority of these, these are going to be the most serious offenses. So these numbers look elevated. When you're going to look at prior felonies, moderate risk of reoffending is 44%, 28% for high. You're going to see these numbers are high. Needs, almost a bell-shaped curve. But we have a high portion of youth that have high and very high needs. When they come in with some of these serious offenses, it's amazing. Prior referrals, 57% had previously been to juvenile court. So we're looking at recidivism rate over 50%. 88% resulted in a, it says, numbers of referrals with result. That means that we took an action, our court counselors took an action. They either approved it or they diverted it away from juvenile court. Under 12 is consistent with the state age and it's great that that number's so low. 56% had prior felony convictions. And that sounds horrendous, but if you go back and look at the data on the number of felonies, you're going to see that that's a relatively small portion because these are the most serious offenses. This represents a higher proportion, just a higher percentage. And I am trying to leave time for y'all's questions, so I will push through. Weapons was 30%. Detention was right around the state average of 22%. Some of those offenses require that these youth go on to detention. Personal crime was 44%. We do not commit, that last number, youth development center commitments, we do not commit a lot of youth in Forsyth County to our youth development centers. We keep them in the community. We do a really good job. Our court counselors and our programs try to keep these youth here because when they move on to our youth development centers, the result, the recidivism rates are much higher, much higher. There's the dropout information that, one of the things I wanted to point out is the youth that we surveyed, only 38% of those youth are attending regularly. That is a concern. You're going to see that in our, the services we advertise for. We're trying to address that need. Most of them are C or lower, it's 11%. 20% are failing some classes and 24% are failing most of their classes. So that is one of those things where we need to make sure we're working with the school system, make sure we're trying to address some of those issues and we have the resources there to address that. Out-of-school suspension, 62% of this population have been, had at least one out-of-school suspension. I was really glad to see in Dr. Stokes' information, the value of extracurricular activities. You can see that our 65% of this population are not interested or not involved in activities. So those, putting them with pro-social peers is going to be important. Mental health issues, this is a relatively low rate, but these youth are the ones that have already been in our system. 26% have a diagnosis and they're already receiving treatment. It almost matches up with the current treatment, past treatment numbers. Displaying a weapon was 14%. We are seeing that, you saw that in one of our top 10 offenses. Bullying, threatening, we're talking about aggression, 34% are having assaulted behavior. So there's aggression. So you're going to see in our services that we try to, we advertise for, that we're trying to address on some of that aggression. We're funding two different anger management programs currently and have this listed in next year's RFP. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, these are the job responsibilities of our council that are assigned by the legislature to review the needs on an annual basis for adjudicated delinquent and undisciplined youth. And while that is the target population for our juvenile court involved population, we should look, be looking at funding youth all the way down to prevention and intervention. We just do not have enough money. Chantel said there's $940,852, and it is not enough money. It's not enough money to address the needs that we've got. Review of those, review the resource in the community, determine that we're not duplicating services. We prioritize the risk factors that we've identified in our Yasi information and other data we've reviewed. Then we develop, we develop an RFP, programs come in and apply. We make funding recommendations. Those funding recommendations come to you for final decision, final local decision. One of the things that is not listed in here, it's another part of the statute, is that we have to monitor these programs at least once a year. And Forsyth County, we do that twice a year. That is because Chantel wanted to make sure that you are getting the information that you need to be able to make informed decisions when you're making these funding recommendations. Our programs, this is just a list of the programs we fund for the current fiscal year and their allocation amounts. So the program name, service type, because of Raise the Age, we've got a couple vocational development programs. Interpersonal skill building, those are going to be services that are building skills for our youth so they can be more resilient. They're very different. You can see that they have all different target populations that, just us program is very different from the Forward Focus or the Kids at Work program. Our temporary shelter closed. You're going to see three different parenting class. We, this, our JCPC funds three different parenting classes through, through, two through Parenting Path and one through Family Services. And it's because that is one of those elevated needs. When you were starting to look at our data, parents are having a hard time providing appropriate supervision. There's the knockout program is experiential ed. It's a boxing program. It's a, they teach triple P to the parents, and they do mindfulness with the parents in yoga. So there's, it's a, it's a, it's a model trying to engage and keep parents, give parents the skills they need to supervise their children. And while teaching youth how to appropriately handle their aggression. We've got Parenting Path, which does in-home services. Tribe Resortive Justice, as you've heard about. They do mediation and aggression replacement therapy is an evidence-based model. Youth Collaborative is a gang intervention model based off the Office of Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention Model, Gang Comprehensive Gang Model. They implement that service. They serve around 40 or 50, they served 50 kids, I think, last year. Working on is restitution program, and Teen Court is another diversionary option. Most of these interpersonal skill programs can be referred directly from schools or SROs. So we're trying to get those referrals front end. So our court counselors can spend the time they need with those deep end cases. Because in the juvenile system, we are, they are not probation officers. They're not probation officers. They're court counselors. They are counselors. They're working with youth, trying to change behaviors, hold youth accountable, and redirect youth's lives. Service information, this is some information that Commissioner Martin always asked for and happy to provide it. This is a number that shows by referral source, referrals to all the programs that were received. You can see that most of our programs did a really good job of meeting those estimated numbers to serve. They were, these numbers were horrendous during COVID. We had to modify our services. We had to adapt. We still had a hard time engaging youth. They're improving. We're starting to see more engagement for these. That last column shows the percentage of youth served towards the estimated numbers to serve. But some of, many of our programs went over. One point I just, one thing I want to point out is Parenting Path Group, they, Parenting Path found out that was, parents were not participating in group. They were done with, with, with groups. They didn't want to be around. They wanted more home visitation. Middle, middle part of the year, Parenting Path came to the JCPC, proposed modifying their approach and moving more towards the in-home visitation. So it's more one-on-one, it's more specialized service. And you can see that they went, met 250% of the estimated numbers to serve because they flip-flopped that. We learned that, they told us that they wanted to do this during their monitoring visit. For our other programs, Project X is the youth, the gang intervention model. They served 125%. Our other programs, you can see, have done a really good job. Temporary Shelter, 40%. They served a lot of, they'll keep a youth instead of the 30 days they're proposed, they'll keep a youth for, some of those youth were in their program for 250 days. Impact Circles is the mediation program. Restart is the aggression replacement therapy. And Community Service Restitution. Those numbers are really low, and our council is looking at that. We're trying to make sure that we're improving those numbers, that they're improving their number of work sites they have. Our requests for proposals are currently listed on the, on the, on the page. We changed that service to meet these needs. We haven't changed our list of services or priority for a number of years. We have changed that so we could have those services that are going to help us on the front end of the system, help support the schools so they can make those referrals, help support the SROs so they can make those referrals, and divert these youth away from juvenile court. And then those cases that really come to juvenile court, our court counselors can spend time with them and make sure they're getting the services they need. Questions?
Questions? Rich?
No, Chantel beat it into my brain that I, I was trying to do this in 15 minutes and I failed.
You have done, you have done well.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Just, just one thing, because the data showed the 2020, 2021 data, which was really COVID, and obviously that was, when you look back into the, a lot of times, we're looking back at where are we when things were normal, whatever that meant? Are we, are, are youth more involved in the, in the system pre-COVID? When you compare to pre-COVID, because we really don't have a pre-COVID comparison. Makes sense?
Our number, Dan might be able to answer that question. Now, let me just say that Dan's brand new to Forsyth County, so he might not know the data, but, but he was over in Guilford County, so he can probably speak with some.
Yeah, my point is, if you look at 2021, obviously that was a strange time for everybody. And so it's not, you know, so it looks like a huge run-up number of kids that are court involved, you know, that are involved in it, but.
Yeah, because I was curious of the same follow-up is whether this first half, we're almost through half the year, is the first half of the year looking similar to like last year? Meaning that, because I think in 21, 22, there was partial school attendance, for example. There's, I mean, for maybe five, six months. So I'm not so sure we've had, I think 22, 23 was the first complete.
That's correct.
Full, normal year. And I'm kind of curious if the first half of this year is looking like that, and as well as if you remember, or kind of can recall back to things maybe in Guilford back pre-COVID.
Well, and just to add to that too, and we need to look further back even from then because we, with the implementation of Raise the Age. In 2019, that changed the game completely when we absorbed the 16 and 17-year-olds. So we're still, we, and then you throw COVID in on there. So we're now starting to really get the true data.
I got it.
Of the, of the population that we're serving. So those trends are not just a Forsyth County trend, that's a trend across the state. So with me being on board here since May, the numbers are fairly similar. I mean, you're looking at a different population of about 150,000. But again, this is probably the closest true data that we've got, I think, in the next year, the next two years. We're going to really see the true hard numbers of where we're at. So that's, that's really what I can add to that question. I hope that answers it.
Other questions for Rich?
Brief question.
Yes, sir.
The numbers on school-based offense, you know, panic increase in the numbers, but coming back from COVID, there did seem to be a shift in the age pattern, 21 to 22, between 21, 22 to 20. From the leading age for complaints being 14 to 15. Living and going younger, 12 to 13. I didn't know if that was just an artifact of the numbers or if you were seeing it, a change in the type of complaints or the age of group.
Well, I think if you look, we are seeing that downward trend. With Raise the Age, you know, we started getting our 16 and 17-year-olds, and a lot of those are committing offenses and they're being, some of those are being bound over to Superior Court. But we are seeing a downward trend. It used to be about 14, five, maybe eight, 10 years ago was about the average age for youth coming into juvenile court. Now it's going down into the 13s. So we're seeing younger youth commit offenses, but if the school-based offenses, there were affrays, assault, affray is a fight, basically. Where there are two, two offenders. And assault is somebody just attacking somebody. So we're seeing some of those more minor offenses. We're seeing that anxiety, aggression, and frustration that's going on in classrooms. So that's that younger population. I think that's where we, you could see those numbers shift.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So as you were talking about the data, especially as it relates to an overrepresentation of some of the demographics, and I mean, it, the data was very clear that African-American students, or what I would say African-American juveniles, 300 odd something versus the other groups, was definitely alarming. And I wonder what kind of strategic approaches are we looking at to try to make sure that we don't have those kind of racial gaps especially, but just overall to trying to figure out how to obviously decrease those numbers?
We were just as concerned. Our council was just as concerned when we saw those data, when we saw that data. And what we are doing is we're looking at a, as a juvenile crime prevention council, because we have everybody around the table that represents the primary agencies in our community. We're looking at developing a racial equity and diversity committee so we can start looking at this. Because when you look at some of that data, when we looked at our, our, it's called red data. When we looked at our red data as a, on the planning committee, we identified that we was, there was an over, significant overrepresentation at the beginning of the system for complaints walking through the door. But as we start making, as our court counselors start making decisions, do we need to approve this for case? Is we need to divert this case? They started getting better and closer to about, we're looking for equity, it needs to be about 1.0. And when we got to approve for court, it was about 1.08. So we're much closer to equity. So we're diverting a lot of those youth. But what we'd like to do is start working with our community partners and say, divert these cases to our programs. Let's do an intervention. Let's stop a problematic behavior at the problematic behavior stage and not wait till it gets to a criminal justice issue that law enforcement has to get involved with, or that then law enforcement refers it to us. Because we can divert, you know, schools can make referrals, law enforcement can make referrals, our court counselors can make referrals. As we're getting closer to full employment now, you're going to see that diversion rate go, go up. So we are, we want to address that issue. It's a, it's a significant concern for our planning committee and our council.
I appreciate that reply, and I think that ultimately by having a focused plan and, and maybe sharing that with the county commissioner so that we can definitely be on board to helping with that scenario. But I did have one more question about the Forsyth Temporary Shelter for.
Yes, ma'am.
Juveniles. Because recently I was at a school board meeting and it seemed like there were a lot of children homeless. And I, I couldn't determine in that data whether they were homeless as emancipated, meaning they were living out on the streets on their own, or they were homeless with their families. But I would assume, based on what I know about children being in the school system and they're emancipated and they're living out here without shelter, that it would be, you would have a higher number served than 10, I guess, as it relates to this current year. So I'm wondering if that number is low than general, or, you know, can you kind of reconcile what, why the numbers look so low as it relates to trying to shelter some of our children that's homeless?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, those youth are juvenile court involved only, those, those are only juvenile court involved only youth for that service. It's a very expensive service, it's around $205 a day. That service was primarily, one of the reasons they closed is because there is a significant shortage of Level 3, you know, mental health group homes or PR, or post-psychiatric residential treatment facilities across the state. Court counselors couldn't get them in there. The reason there are only four youth served is because every one of those youth, if we went back and looked at their comprehensive clinical assessment, probably indicated that a Level 3 group home or a PRTF was appropriate. They were serving a higher level need than they were licensed for, and they had behaviors that they could not handle. And the risk to that agency, I wanted that service to stay around, but my advice to them was you, your board needs to look at this, at the risk you're putting yourself and your staff in. There's, that's an issue that is at the legislature. We need more capacity. The reality is, they don't want to fund resident, excuse me. This is Rich Smith consultant, not somebody from the Department of Public Safety saying this. This is because I think Dr. Martin knew me when I worked at Forsyth Stokes Mental Health back in the day. We don't have the resources that we need to meet our high-end needs. We don't. We don't have enough PRTFs and we don't have enough group homes. But that is Rich Smith, that is not a statement from the Department of Public Safety. I have to differentiate between that because that's something that, when I retire, I'm going to be working with the state, trying to figure out how do we fix this mental health system?
I surely appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you, Rich. All right, next up is a multi-pronged presentation about the Forsyth Wins Program. This program utilizes the Cure Violence Model, which is an evidence-based public health model that stops the spread of violence by using the methods and strategies associated with disease control. They use a targeted approach and identify specific areas of the community by evaluating crime and incident data, by detecting and interrupting conflict, identifying and treating the highest-risk individuals, and changing social norms. This program is jointly funded by the city and county and currently covers Police Beat 222, which is the Cleveland Avenue area. Because it uses a public health approach, the city agreed that our public health department should provide oversight of the program. Assistant Public Health Director Sharita Sutton is the liaison with all of the implementing partners. I service co-chair of the Forsyth Wins Steering Committee along with Assistant City Manager Patrice Tony. There are also many other members of the committee. Some examples include Commissioner McDaniel, City Councilman James Taylor, the schools, Department of Public Safety, law enforcement, both hospitals, and many others. The commissioners and city council each agreed to provide 750,000 of ARPA funds for this program for a total of $1.5 million. We contract with Neighbors for Better Neighborhoods for program implementation, Cure Violence Global, based out of Chicago for technical assistance, and the University of North Carolina Greensboro Serv Center for program evaluation. I also want to mention that Atrium Health, Wake Forest Baptist, recently started a hospital-based violence intervention program that works closely with our Forsyth Wins team, and their administrator is also on our steering committee. The hospital's funding was provided to the city as a pass-through from the state. So today you'll hear from Neighbors for Better Neighborhoods, Cure Violence Global, and UNCG Serv Center. First up is Neighbors for Better Neighborhoods, Ms. Tembele Covington, the Forsyth Wins Program Liaison, and Mr. Curtis Friday, Forsyth Wins Program Manager.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Tembele Covington. I am the Strengthening Neighborhood and Families Program Director at Neighbors for Better Neighborhood. We will not be standing before you long. We wanted to show ourselves, to let you know that we are consistently and we are certainly diligently working in the field of our 222 BEAT as being contracted as a CBO to implement the Cure Violence Global model. I just wanted to just highlight a few things that this has certainly been an initiative that has brought, brought some capacity and us being able to build some partnerships. Some of those partnerships, of course, as named, are the Hospital-Based Violence Intervention Program, as well as the Bears Team with the Winston-Salem Fire Department. And we do have one of the care workers with the school system that is working with us as part of our initial partners in this work. So without further ado, I am just glad to be able to present to you, introduce our new program manager, Mr. Curtis Friday, who will share a little bit more about the extent of our team and our staff that is working boots on the ground in the community of the 222 BEAT.
Good morning. Good to see, good to see some of you. Some faces I already know. But November the 1st is when I started as a program manager. Came in and kind of seen some changes that needed to be made. So we made changes in the month. All about, so I've communicated with Cure Violence, got them down here this month. Everybody is trained. Tomorrow we're going into data training. So everybody will be trained on data. So we just made a few. So we just made a few changes and from the first month, I wanted to evaluate, see what team we had, make sure that we had the right team. Of course, some of you know that Cure Violence model is that we have people that are in our community, just like you, Ms. Woods, Woodbury. That increase of number of African-Americans that we just seen is kind of concerning as well. And I think having people from our community in the, with the boots-on-the-ground will kind of try to help with that as well. So we have a solid team. Cure Violence came and said we were one of the best teams that they have trained so far. So that's a plus. And just taking them out into the community, we've already eyeballed certain participants, particularly some of them go to Main Street. So we've already eyeballed a lot of people that we kind of knew and that we're going to kind of bring on. But the first step was to get everybody trained and knowing the model and what that brings. So I think we're doing a great job with that. So for the next 60 days, you'll see that data kind of go up a little bit more. We are planning to go out to the community this week, this month, just for kind of represent who we are, new faces. And then next month, in January, in the beginning of the year, have a kind of big event, get some volunteers, and make sure that we have everybody on one page to do the work that we kind of wanted, all of us want to see in our community.
And in closing, just for your purview, the staff, the Forsyth Wins staff encompasses eight staff members, our program manager, our program supervisor, two outreach workers, which are case manager workers, and four violence interrupters. That's our presentation for today.
Thank you. Pastor Friday, if I could get one of those, the silly comment, sweatshirt, size medium, I like it. Thank you. So were there an opportunity to ask questions or comments with the?
You absolutely can. We also have some data presentations.
Oh, okay.
But if you have questions for them, you can ask them now.
So yeah, I'll wait till the data comes on.
So next we will have Cure Violence Global staff presenting information and explaining the data that reflects the work of the Forsyth Wins team. So I will say that this has been a work in progress and a lot of lessons learned along the way, but under the new leadership of Pastor Friday, I am more than confident this program is headed in the right direction. So joining me remotely from Cure Violence Global out of Chicago is Dr. Charles Elliott, Director of Data Management, and Mr. Demetrius Watley, the National Trainer. So I'm going to unshare my slides and they're going to take control on their end. Dr. Elliott, can you hear us? We can't hear him. Dr. Elliott, are you speaking? We can see your slides.
We're waiting for our technology, folks.
Unmute yourself, Dr. Elliott.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, again, I'm Dr. Charles Elliott, Director of Data Management for Cure Violence Global. Appreciate the introduction. I'm going to go ahead and go through just a couple of these slides to keep us on time, and then we'll get to the questions. So so far, in the Cure Violence Winston-Salem Forsyth Wins program, we've collected a good amount of data. I'll say it's increasing, as you can see on this slide, kind of towards the middle. And just like Chantel mentioned, we are looking at interruption, behavior change, and norm change primarily as reflected in the model. So these hours reflect that information. On the top left of this slide, you also see that there's information related to public education materials that's been passed out through the community, as well as hours worked inside the target area, and then administrative hours that relate to training or internal staff work. There at the bottom, you can see that there is the total approach hours through the Cure Violence Winston-Salem program. You can see that's been increasing rapidly through the coming months. On this slide, you'll see the amount of staff referrals that have been committed to mostly non-participants in the program so far. The participants that were a part of the program were added mostly last month, so we're just looking at the increase of those participants as the program continues on. You'll see a majority of that work has been referring individuals in the community to education programs through social programs or through work programs. You can see that was kind of broken down by month in the bottom right corner. So primarily, one of the main components of the model is violence interruption, which means, you know, we're kind of going out in the community, interrupting violence by any means necessary. You can see those interruptions have kind of occurred through the course of the last six months, and those interruptions are documented internally by staff at the Neighbors for Better Neighborhoods program. You can see there were eight interruptions just in October, which make up the majority of those interruptions throughout the programs, as well as the follow-ups that were related with those interruptions. You can kind of see the breakdown in the middle of the slide of the individuals who are involved in those interruptions, as well as the groups that were involved or the participants that were involved. So men, women, boys, and girls broken down. So primarily, most of those individuals were involved in September. To the right on the slide, you can see the interruption outcome. So most, 56% of those interruptions were resolved, 31% of those were conditionally resolved, and 12% were unresolved. You can see the types of interruption events that we're working with, so mostly individual conflicts, but also many group conflicts were robberies and muggings. So likelihood of recurrence is mostly kind of an even split right now, whether it be unknown, unlikely, or likely. And the time of day that these interruptions are occurring are mostly in the evening. Additionally, you have pretty much no history of interruption, long history of interruption as kind of being the majority, but then you have 31% in being recent history. So in terms of interruption escalation, none of these interruptions have escalated into violent incidents such as shootings or homicides. And then for secondary interruptors, 56% of the staff are working together to interrupt violence, with 43% being just by themselves. Lastly, the non-staff interruptors or interruptors, people who are part of the community or people that are part of special programs, as mentioned through the presentations, who are aiding the Forsyth Wins staff to go out there and kind of help interrupt violence as well. This could be teachers, basketball coaches, police department, wherever the case may be. And that had 43% of those individuals present during these interruptions. In terms of the participants in the program so far, we have 10 participants in the program, eight of which of those participants are high-risk. So when we talk about high-risk, we mean the people who are most at-risk, either committing or being a victim of violence. Of those participants, nine are medium need, and one is high need. And then of the participants in the resilience are similar to the educational assessment, the strength category, but we call it resilience. Six of those are in the low resilience categories. That's something to think about in terms of the way the participants are reflected through the program so far. So the right types of participants, in short. This slide kind of covers all the different community engagement by the staff. You can see it's definitely been increasing over the last few months, especially in October, where there was a lot of engagement. You can see that overall, we've impacted many individuals in Winston-Salem through contact, and this is obviously through kind of engaging them about the program, explaining what the program is, and working with them in the community. So just in October, we had over 1,000 individuals engaged, and then in November, we had about 619 individuals engaged, for example. So we like to break those individuals down by also women and children, because we know that women and children by the CDC are the most affected by violence. And you can see here, especially at the bottom, the youth that were affected by violence and interacted with by the staff, 479 in October and then just 87 in November. We also break those down by either children that are less than 12 or more than 12. So you can see most of those children that were interacted with in October were less than 12, 346 individuals. So in terms of the staff public education materials, you can see that's also rapidly increasing on the right-hand side of the slide. As the months go on, we expect to continue to see that increase and as training occurs tomorrow. Last, but definitely not least, the Forsyth Wins team are definitely engaging the community every month with at least one community event, spending about four hours at those events, and roughly spending around $3,661 so far on those events themselves, where over 277 pieces of pub ed were handed out. Primarily, these events are, you know, different kind of events in the community, so we just list them as other. But we also have one potential participant event that occurred where participants were being recruited. And then obviously, we've had a good number of individuals present at those events overall, 453 people signed up for those events. I'll go ahead and stop my sharing, Chantel, so you can switch back to yours. Are there any questions for me?
Thank you, Dr. Elliott. Are there any questions for Dr. Elliott, or do you want to wait? Because we have one more segment for Forsyth Wins.
Any questions?
I'll wait until all of the data is in.
All right. Let me just... Okay. Last part of the Forsyth Wins program, we will have the University of North Carolina Greensboro Serv Center presenting the evaluation component of the Forsyth Wins program. They serve as the third-party entity that reviews the program and ensures that they are maintaining the fidelity of the Cure Violence model, and they are tracking the program's effect on reducing violence and changing community perceptions. Associate Professor of Public Health Education, Dr. Erica Peyton from UNCG is here in person, and we have Associate Director of State and Community Relations Serv Center at UNCG, Dr. Carla Lewis, joining us remotely. Dr. Peyton.
Good almost afternoon to everyone. Thank you so much for giving us some time to highlight a few areas from our baseline report and our progress regarding what we've learned so far with this project. So UNCG is responsible for evaluating the Cure Violence program for Winston-Salem. The UNCG team is made up of six individuals that work first serve and the Center for Housing and Community Studies at UNCG. And both of our centers operate under the Office of Research and Engagement that's led by our Vice Chancellor, Dr. Terry Shelton. And during our time today, we want to cover the areas that you see, or maybe you don't. Yeah, here you go. During our time today, we're going to cover the items that are provided for you on the screen, but we want to spend the most of our time discussing the status of both the impact evaluation and the implementation evaluation. So regarding the implementation side of the evaluation, it's designed to assess the extent to which the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Cure Violence Initiative, currently known now as Forsyth Wins, provided high-quality services and activities that align with the Cure Violence model. The impact evaluation, however, is designed to determine if there are any changes or shifts in attitudes, perceptions, and/or behaviors of program participants and/or among other members of the targeted community regarding violence. Therefore, during the early stages of this initiative, the evaluation team has worked in collaboration with Neighbors for Better Neighborhood to get a clear picture of what are some of the challenges that the model presented in terms of recruitment and training of staff and engagement with the community, and also what are specific actions, activities, or services did they propose to implement in order to achieve those outcomes? The goal of the impact evaluation is to determine the impact of Cure Violence on the targeted neighborhood, and the UNCG team, we're evaluating the program evaluation to see if there is a reduction in neighborhood violence, reduction in neighborhood violence by individuals who are at a greater risk for violence, or at the greatest risk for being a victim of violence, changes in community attitudes and actions regarding violence. And we are also interested in understanding how have the resources and assistance provided through the program made a difference to individuals identified at risk for engaging in violence from choosing to not engage in those acts of violence. Specifically, we seek to answer the four questions that are provided for you on the screen to assess the impact of Cure Violence in Winston-Salem. We're using both the quantitative and qualitative data. The implementation evaluation focuses on assessing the implementation fidelity of the activities and the outputs identified in the logic model. The questions center on asking, did program implementation occur in the way that it was intended? In addition, they focus on ways in which the program can improve. In some, the program level changes will be examined as part of the implementation study and also included in the fidelity of implementation measures. To assess the fidelity of implementation, we've worked with NBN Forsyth Wins to identify levels specific to indicators for each of the key components. Each indicator will receive a rating that will then be summed for each of the six key components. A total rating of fidelity of implementation will be calculated by adding the total fidelity of implementation score for each of the six key components. I also wanted to make sure that we note that implementation is not just one event, it is a process. Implementation is a specific set of activities designed to put in practice an activity or program. And these activities occur over time and in stages that overlap and sometimes are even revisited as needed. So now I'm happy to share just a very brief summarization of the baseline report, which we shared at the Steering Committee meeting in March of 2023. And we are also happy, don't have a copy of that baseline report, we're happy to share it with you again. So as a result of the thought process with SERVE and NBN and Forsyth Wins, we developed this logic model that's before you, and this serves as a roadmap for designing both the implementation and impact evaluation questions and methodologies. So a little bit about the actual target or the treatment neighborhood versus the comparison neighborhood. So the impact evaluation is a quasi-experimental study comparing the target Cure Violence neighborhood, which is often referred to as Police Beat 222, with a comparison neighborhood that will not receive the Cure Violence model. The comparison neighborhood was identified using key characteristics of the census tract in which Police Beat 222 is located, including rates of violence, the population demographics, socioeconomic condition, spatial characteristics, and selecting a neighborhood with similar characteristics. For our baseline report, we also conducted a survey. We used a slightly modified version of the John Jay College Criminal Justice NYC Cure Survey Instrument, and this was in accordance with the requirements for the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Evaluation RFA. We use this instrument to measure attitudes towards violence and other factors that have been shown to moderate violent behavior. While the Cure Violence survey is designated to track changes in attitudes towards violence over time across three different ways or administration, this first benchmark survey is beneficial in that it provides Neighbors for Better Neighborhood descriptive data regarding the target population of local residents proposed to be served by the program. Thus, to gain greater insights about the target population and Beat 222, our findings that were included in the baseline survey included information from survey respondents on their demographics, personal victimization rates, observed prevalence of guns in the neighborhood, neighborhood interactions, social ties, and perceptions of safety, their confidence in formal institutions. It also included a list of hypothetical conflict scenarios and asked to see how they would respond to those potential and hypothetical scenarios, and observations on social media. And during our Steering Committee meeting, we actually went into more detail around -- And during our Steering Committee meeting, we actually went into more detail around the bolded items highlighted in the overview. We also conducted during the baseline section of our evaluation baseline interviews. So as a part of the evaluation process, the pre-implementation interviews were conducted with twenty key stakeholders that were also identified by Winston-Salem Forsyth County Cure Violence Steering Committee and the Forsyth Department of Public Health. The stakeholder groups included city and county officials, Neighbors for Better Neighborhoods, Cure Violence Global staff, and various local community partners such as Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, Parks and Recreation, and faith-based leaders. The intent of these baseline interviews were to gain a better understanding of the early planning and adoption stage of the Cure Violence model, background information that would provide context around Police Beat 222, other initiatives that are currently being implemented in the area, and the level of stakeholder buy-in prior to the implementation So the baseline report was completed in early 2023, and again, it was shared with the Cure Violence Steering Committee during their May 2023 meeting. And at that time, there were really three findings that we thought were really important to share for further consideration. While there is planning taking place and connections being made, more efforts need to be made to ensure sufficient level of communication with all community stakeholders. During the interviewees, some stakeholders shared that they were unaware of the current status of Cure Violence. As NBN staff prepared to engage with community members in the Cure Violence Study neighborhood, this would be a good time for program managers to reengage with the stakeholders and introduce them to the local team. And even based on today's presentation, we know that this is continuing to occur. Interviewees also identified multiple organizations that provided similar wraparound services within the catchment area or area around Police Beat 22. However, these community-based organizations all had varying interest goals and funding sources. Thus, it's important for the NBN to conduct a comprehensive community resources and survey mapping for the two study neighborhoods. The Cure Violence model acknowledges that individuals and organizations have the capacity to create the change in their communities, but no one individual organization can do it alone. The model requires that the implementation team form community partnerships that are both formal and informal as early in the process as possible. And staff members will be the face of the organization. Thus, it's essential that the program hires staff that have the necessary skill set to implement the Cure Violence model successfully. And NBN has already been methodical in their recruitment of staff and been supported in their efforts by the Cure Violence Global staff and Public Health Department. However, in order to foster staff retention, it also, it's also important to continuously pay attention to the needs of their staff, all of whom are engaged in a highly visible and stressful job, I might add.
Dr. Peyton Foe, could you perhaps pick up the pace? We're getting.
Oh, sure, absolutely. How much time do I have left? So briefly, I will highlight some of the preliminary data that we have here on our police crime data report. And I'm actually going to skip that slide. That kind of explains what those next, the next slides include, which would be our service call data as well as some of our crime data. So this first slide is relating to calls for service data that focus on calls relating to the possible assault and discharge or other use of weapons presented separately. This chart, as well as the next chart that I will show, shows that adjusted population for size Beat 222 had a higher rate of assault and weapons-related calls than our comparison neighborhoods, which is Police Beat 112 and 121. This suggests that Police Beat 222 had higher levels of violence, violence activities. And so in our next slide, it's the crime data shows only incidents involving non-domestic assaults or illegal use of firearms. And again, the patterns of incidents show that overall, these incidents occurred at a higher rate in Police Beat 222 across all four quarters compared to our comparison neighborhoods in Police Beat 112 and 121. This data supports the conclusion that at this early point in the implementation of Forsyth Wins Cure Violence, there was no evidence to indicate that an appreciable impact on the number of violence incidents in Police Beat 222. Our stakeholder focus groups. So we piloted one focus group this past November, and we were able to recruit representatives of community organizations that provide resources or services to individuals that reside in the target neighborhood, which is Police Beat 222, more commonly referred to as the Cleveland Avenue neighborhood. We were able to recruit eight representatives from these local organizations to participate in this virtual focus group. And the findings for, from that focus group will be shared in our mid-year report. Wrapping up, I'm going to talk just a little bit more about the implementation evaluation. So again, we asked about the quality of the implementation of the strategies and the activities and the fidelity in the implementation and the number of quantities of activities. For the mid-year memo, the team will focus on answering that first question there. I had to go back, my apologies. Our data collection effort is a collaborative process and was discussed during our meeting with the Department of Health and Forsyth Wins. For the fall data collection, a list of potential interviews was discussed with both the Department of Health and Forsyth Wins, and once there was an agreement on that list of interviewees, we were able to make contact with those individuals and schedule the interviews, and we also conducted a focus group for in the early fall. And the additions, observations were conducted at Forsyth Wins trainings, staff meetings, and also their community events. So our next steps, as our evaluation team continues to evaluate both the implementation and the evaluation of Forsyth Wins, we will have a mid-year memo that will be ready to go in January 2024. We will also continue to work with the Police Department to collect quarterly crime data, review the Cure Violence Global Database, which Dr. Elliott just went over, and continue to recruit for community members for additional focus groups in spring 2024, and finalizing our year-one report that will be ready by summer 2024. I do have one more slide that I just wanted to emphasize. While we know how important it is for us to speak about the impact of a program, first we have to talk about how it's being implemented and the process that occurs there. The implementation of Cure Violence has been developed for over a year, and its on-the-ground implementation started late this past summer. It's important to note that most initiatives take at least three years of implementation before impact questions can be answered. The National Implementation Research Network at Frank Porter Graham Child Development Institute shared, "Research shows achieving intended outcomes through implementation a well-constructed, well-defined, well-received program can be expected to take anywhere between two to four years." So I believe I may be out of time, so I just wanted to again, thank you.
You've been out of time for some time.
Oh, my goodness. Happy to take any questions.
Yeah, in fact, it's with reports coming in January and kind of the getting started, I probably have quite a few questions I will hold perhaps to another time that we can hear. Does anybody have just a quick sort of, sort of follow-up question here before we?
I don't have any follow-up questions, but thank you for the intensive reporting today. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that out of all of the data that you shared with us, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear of what basically I should capture, and you correct me if I'm kind of wrong, but it seems like on one of the slides, and it's not numbered, so I can't refer you to it, but the title of it is 2023 Calls for Service and Crime Data Beat 222 and Beats 112 and Beat 121. So the last sentence reads, "These data support a conclusion that at this early point in the implementation of Forsyth Wins Cure Violence, there is no evidence to indicate an appreciable impact on the number of violence impacts." So are we saying that because we are in year one, we cannot determine whether this project is really affecting crime in this targeted area?
Yes, because of the time of that Cure Violence, Forsyth Wins has actually been on the ground, this data that we're presenting right now really isn't reflective of the implementation of Cure Violence. There hasn't been enough time yet for us to be able to say that there's, that Cure Violence has an impact on this crime data. This is just the data that we have now, and we're hoping that as the Cure Violence programs continue to be implemented, that we'll be able to make some comparisons in our, in future reports of the evaluation.
And just to clarify, Commissioner Woodbury, they have only been boots on the ground for four months.
Okay, that, that helps. The other question I have, can you all filter the date, the data for juvenile? So if there is acts of violence, can we determine whether they're juvenile or not?
If there is anyone on the call, maybe Dr. Elliott.
Pastor Friday is shaking his head, so I'll take that as. Okay, so we will be able to determine ultimately as it relates to the acts of violence, you know, and trying to prevent or resolve it, whether they were juvenile or not participating in violence, I guess my question.
Well, you will be able to, now, but with participants, you will be able to know like the age group, but it's from fifteen to thirty-five is participants that we are kind of looking at, but as far as juveniles, that would be a Dr. Ellis question as far as if we interrupt a violent, would that be a juvenile or would that be like a adult? Which age group is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yeah, so I know in the, in the data that we, the only time we put age in there is when we have a participant, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. And I think that would be helpful for us, especially for instance, as it relates to today's focus group. It's about, you know, juvenile, a lot of that, crime that affects our juveniles in this county. And so I know that you all are dealing with juvenile and non-juvenile, but I think as relates to when we're talking about the violence interruption, how does Forsyth Wins impact our juvenile violence as well as violence overall? I think that's a big part.
And the answer to that question too, we asked that question because a lot of times we see high-risk with juveniles. We were just out there as twelve-year-olds. So what we're, what we're going to do is with our office space, is allow them to come over and just be participators. So like, we can't make a twelve-year-old participant, but we can make them a participator. So we're going to be working with twelve-year-olds, and we, we could surely, you know, the next time we come back, I can surely keep that record of it. I don't know how we could keep it on data, but I can keep the record of it and say, hey, we've been working with twelve, thirteen-year-olds that's been participators to help out in that aspect.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we have two segments left. Next up is our Sheriff's Office. The Sheriff's Office was approved for $2,183,324 in ARPA funds for the Juvenile Intervention and Investigation Team, which is JIT. Their approved ARPA activities was to intercede in the lives of at-risk youth by communicating with parents and guardians, mentoring juveniles through the Transforming Teens Program and Decision Points Program, and community involvement by participating in events with the Sheriff's Office Outreach Team. By conducting these activities, the program's measures were to show a reduction in juvenile delinquency and juvenile-involved violent crimes in Forsyth County. Today, Sheriff Kimbrough and Lieutenant Ray are here to present.
Good morning. Commissioner, it's a blessing to be here before my family again. I want to extend holiday greetings to all of you and congratulations on the new positions. Ms. Wilson-Hunt, Dr. Martin, it's a pleasure to be here. First of all, I want to just give a brief, two seconds about what JIT is. When we created JIT, the name, we started with juvenile intervention investigator, and we wanted intervention to be in front of investigator for that reason only. I just want to give you some facts, but I wanted to give a thanks to Chief Penn for being here. He had to step out and support, he had to lead, but I just wanted to give you a few facts about 2023. So far in 2023, we've had seven juvenile murders in four different incidents. So far in 2023, we've had five juveniles have been charged with murder, two in two different incidents, and at least three certified gang members. So far in 2023, there have been 228 firearms-related petitions filed. Here's the thing about facts, all facts are not found. With you all's help, we're changing the facts to a positive. I look at this JIT unit as to the first in flight with the Wright brothers. It started off as a single engine that has morphed into what we see now, planes coming and going. You have initiated a JIT unit that is first in flight, that is changing the landscape of this community, and I just want to say thank you. I'm going to get out the way and let Lieutenant Ray present you with some facts and some information. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for, first off, allowing me the time to be up here and explain what JIT is out there doing, and also my appreciation for allowing ARPA to fund some of what we're doing and be able to go out there and touch the community. First off, I'll start with the JIT mission statement. The JIT mission is to reduce the involvement of youth in violent crimes by providing positive role models, mentorship, and opportunities to escape the glamorized and normalized gang or criminal lifestyle that they're accustomed to. JIT accomplishes this mission through positive interaction at community events, going to the schools, and volunteering at community programs. The second aspect of our unit is to remove the negative influences from the community by targeting gang members and other negative influences in high-crime areas through investigating criminal behavior. JIT is different from any other, any other unit in the state, especially local law enforcement, because as the sheriff stated, intervention comes first. We're proactive, not always reactive. We're trying to go out, intervene in these young men, young women's lives to prevent them from getting involved in criminal behavior. We form relationships. We believe that relation forming is the biggest advocate we have as our unit. We go out and meet with these kids at schools, community programs, like I said, form these relationships. We've taken them on trips, we go, we've taken them camping, we spend time at the schools as well as doing our enforcement action. Two of our biggest success stories for JIT have come after some enforcement action, after filing juvenile petitions on young men. JIT is able to spend time in multiple schools and rec. centers, which is different from SROs and our Patrol Division, because we dedicate the time to go in there and build our relationships. We work very closely with the other units, with the gang unit, with the gun crime reduction unit, with other units in Winston-Salem Police Department, as well as with the community outreach program at the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office. As you see here in the video that I have playing, it's JIT going out there to Haynes Middle School and just playing dodgeball with the kids. As I said, JIT takes the time to go out there and do that and just go out and have fun with the kids. For the essence of time, I'll go through, I'll skip over the tasks and the measurables. As you can, you can look through them in your PowerPoint and read those as well. We have many, we offer, we offer many leadership and education opportunities. We work with the Dream Team Foundation, where we've taken forty young men to learn life skills and lessons to become better leaders in the community. In conjunction with the Dream Team program, we understand the importance of reaching the youth early. Therefore, they began the program called the FCSO Gents. This is where JIT and other members of the FCO family speak with young men from Griffith Elementary School regularly. During this time, we provide life lessons and offer support for problems they are facing. The biggest thing for JIT is that we believe that the relationships are the foundation of what we're doing. We need to go out and intervene and build these relationships with these young men and women in our community. Some of the events that we've done, we've taken kids to Atlanta, to Alabama, we've taken them to Washington, D.C. to tour all kinds of historical sites and get hands-on education that they would most often not ever see. Most of these young men have families, their friends, they've never seen these places, they've never gone out of the state, they've never even gone out of Winston-Salem sometimes. So taking them on these trips, they get to see and travel with us, they see that we're just regular, regular guys, regular people like they are, and we go out and we go and we tour these things, and they see how, how much these places touch us, because some of the JIT members that have been there, they've never experienced this either. Some of them have never been to Alabama or to the museums in Washington, D.C. So it was an experience that they get together and share together, and that relationship So it was an experience that they get together and share together, and that relationship is something that you can't break. That bond, going there and sharing that experience together is what is going to build this community and make JIT a success. We've done a community, a lot of community outreach events, we've delivered Christmas presents, we've done the Bed in the Book Program at Cleveland Homes, we've done it at Rolling Hills. So we do a lot of events with our community outreach to help the community and show them a different side to law enforcement. I have some stories in here that have some juveniles where we've made a difference, we believe in. We have one in here where they've made us a cake. One student at Mount Tabor came and brought us a cake just because we were there hanging out in the schools and just talking to them regularly. That's no criminal involvement, no nothing else, just being there. They recognize the importance of us being there and the difference that JIT is making. As you see on, on this page, there's a juvenile two. This is one of our main success stories where we got into an incident with him and we have now, we filed petitions on him, and now he is a student at Mount Tabor. We regularly visit with him, he's a great student, and everything is good. So it started off as a negative. JIT intervened in his life, became a mentor with him, our JIT member talks to him regularly, and now he's a great student at, at Mount Tabor High School in our Forsyth County system, which is a success of JIT. We, we attend campaigns every summer. We take 40, 40 young men to campaigns, which is a faith-based camp through the YMCA. And taking these young men to this camp gives them the experience to meet new people and try different things that they would often not experience in their neighborhood. As you see in the PowerPoint, I also have several more. I have several letters from community members, agency heads, and other people that are offering their support for JIT and the difference that they're make, that JIT is making. I'll go through and touch on some of the stats now because we believe that those are very important as well. On an average right now, JIT is taking one gun off the street per shift. That is huge. One gun out of the hands of an adult or a juvenile is huge because it saves a life. It is potentially saving it at the minimum of one life. JIT is, as you can see in the PowerPoint, JIT impacted numerous programs, other agencies, Forsyth County Schools, the Winston-Salem Police Department, multiple agencies that are helping us out. And overall, since May 28th, 2022, when JIT was formed, JIT has been working tirelessly in the streets of Forsyth County to make this community better and safer. They work rotating shifts, come in on their days off, get called in early, and do all this because they believe in the mission at hand. The impact this unit has, has had on this community is readily apparent with these stories and stats. But stats are not what defines this unit or its success. The influence that we have already seen in a short amount of time is unable to be measured by statistics. When these young men, young men and women grow up and become graduates, business leaders, and leaders in this community, we will see the true impact that JIT has had. I'll step away now and answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for the tenant.
Chairman, I don't have any questions. I, I do have some comments. I wanted to say thank you. This is one of the programs that I wanted to support during our budget season last year, and to see all of the wonderful results and successes is phenomenal. But I wanted to know, what are the barriers in terms of bringing a female on your team? And are you not seeing female representatives that need support in the community as well?
So right now, I'll let, Chairman.
No, that's a great question. That was one of the things that we're looking to do is to bring a female on the team, to get funding for that. When we began it, that was the metaphor I was talking about, the airplane. It started out as one thing, it has morphed into so many other things. And so the JIT unit, we want to bring a female on because there are some issues as we talk about dealing with females. And I prefer we have a female on the unit when interacting with females. Great question. Thank you.
Hopefully we'll see it next, in the next budget. Thank you.
I probably just have a curiosity about how you collect your data, the data that you just reported. Because I, I understand that you're out doing events and so forth, and so I'm, I'm, so for example, how would you end up, you made 352 arrests, sought 53 juvenile position, you know, petitions. Where have those, how, where do those happen? How do the, are you getting, you're, you must be getting calls, referrals from others. Earlier in the school district presentation, there was a mention of you all kind of a part of the, I mean, as part of the, the big team and the family with community partners, calling JIT team members and so forth. I, I guess I'm trying to, I'm trying to find out how you get into positions where you do that. Because you don't do that when you're doing the fun things, you develop relationships. Can you connect the dots from how the relationships are producing these, these results? Like the arrest, like the, the drug seizures, like the, all those things? How, how is that, how is that happening? Or are they recurring from what I would call more traditional law enforcement sort of behavior?
So to answer the first part of the question, the data is collected, anytime we arresting someone or taking in drugs, we have to document that the guns are kept in the system. The data that I gave you from the beginning was the data collected by the sheriff's office and the police department. Now how it relates to the relationships leading in investigation, a lot of times when we're intervening into some things, things that are happening in the middle of the night, and we're getting called in from tips or people or relationships they have developed lead into investigations, which lead to some of the, the enforcement actions, which leads to some of the other things. And so by collecting data and storing that data that we have in a layered approach with the real-time intelligence, you start connecting the dots based on information, it leads you into investigation. They work hand in hand.
I hear you. So, so part of what you're saying is that an arrest, for example, may have a relationship with JIT team member results in a contact because of that relationship, then an opportunity to refer to someone else. So the JIT team member may not be making the arrest, it may be someone else, and yours, and how did we get this tip? And the tip came from someone who talked to the JIT officer? Am I getting this correct, kind of a sequence?
Yes.
A lot of times, I realize it may not be that way every time, but I'm just trying to understand the process.
Yes, sir. There are always exceptions. Most recent incident, the scare that we had about two weeks ago online, where they was talking about someone doing harm in the school. When that tip came in, it came in from a juvenile, from a JIT relationship, which led us to actually picking the kid up or having contact with the kid at a basketball game. It's the relationship that creates a lot of the opportunities when we talk about intervention and intercepting activity, almost like the interrupters do, by building relationships in the community, by building relationships with kids in the schools, by field trips and things like that. Kids get to know you from a whole different standpoint, and then they begin to talk, they begin to share information with you. Now, of course, a lot of it comes from them being out on the street observing certain things. So it works hand in hand, and that's why when we talk about building a JIT unit, we want an intervention in front of investigation, because the sole purpose is to intervene. And sometimes intervention will lead to an investigation.
I, I got it. That, that helped.
Other questions?
I do have a question about the data collection, Sheriff. I think that there is an opportunity for JIT to collect some great data around how you all impact the children that, or the juveniles that you come in contact with. And, and I'm not sure if that's just by way of, you know, an attendance record of the events that you all host and just sharing with this community, you know, definitively how many children you all have positively engaged with over the year. I think also, as I'm looking at your seizure data, I guess it's a catch 22 whether the collection of firearms being up or down, you know, it just depends on how you're looking at it. But I, I, I think that we all see qualitatively what is going on with JIT, and I, and I think it is a model for this country of 21st century public safety and how we build relationships with our citizens so that it is that much more, I guess, strategic as it relates to how we keep our community safe instead of always reacting to our issues. And so I, I'm not sure, Chantel, if there is any kind of clearinghouse or data collection group that can talk with the sheriff's JIT team around. You all have the opportunity to collect some great data, and they probably have that data too, that you could really show pound for pound the, the numbers. But, you know, what I would tell you is that this, these kinds of programs are so essential for our school system and in our community. So I applaud your leadership and forward thinking around how do we deter juvenile behavior that is not of, that's not positive in our community?
Appreciate that because we couldn't do that without you, you all funding, and we couldn't do it without the school system that has helped us in so many incidents. And I think it's the whole community that's coming together, trying to figure out, how do we deter someone? The numbers that I gave you from the beginning was to show that there is a need for JIT. But again, thank you all for what you've done, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to quickly respond, Commissioner Woodbury, about the evaluation. All of the ARPA programs are supposed to have an evaluation component, and our compliance manager is working closely with the JIT team just so that we can make sure that we are appropriately evaluating so we can report that back, not just to you, but we're required to report it back to the federal government.
Okay, that's the point.
So we will absolutely shore that up.
Chantel, before you move forward, can you remind me when these programs through the ARPA programs are supposed to end? I think there was an extension.
Well, the programs are, are currently slated through December 2024. We just received word that we can extend the timeframe, not the funding, but the timeframe, and that'll be something that we bring back to you all to discuss what that looks like for various programs, if they need more time, again, not more funding. And so we'll, we'll work through that with our compliance manager and ARPA administrator so you all are clear on where we are with, with everything.
Thank you.
The JIT team will be a little bit of an exception. I fully expect they will, it will be a discussion in the upcoming budget year because if you remember, we pushed that forward to get it started a little quicker and, and they have, they spent funds and, and the salary adjustments that have been pretty aggressive around retention and recruitment have cost, obviously impacted it. So they will run out of money before December of 24. We're good through the end of the year according to Randy, but, but it will be an issue next budget year.
I was thinking through Cure Violence as well. I think that they still had the extended time. They may not need the money, but the time.
Absolutely, and we've already had that discussion with Cure Violence. They will need more time, but they will not need more funding. Yes, ma'am. All right, last up is an overview of Project Safe Neighborhoods, which focuses on community engagement, prevention and intervention, strategic enforcement, and accountability in data. This initiative has been working with all of the partners here today and many others in the community, primarily to break down silos that sometimes hinder our community from seeing the changes that are required. You will hear from Assistant U.S. Attorney Rob Lang and Consultant Alvin Atkinson, who will discuss the Safe Winston-Salem Forsyth County Youth Initiative.
I will stay within time, I promise you. I have a mandatory meeting at 1:00 in Greensboro. I bring greetings from Sandra Jane Hairston, my U.S. attorney, and we're going to do a little bit of an overview of Project Safe Neighborhoods and talk to you, first of all, about the four pillars of Project Safe Neighborhoods. You're going to understand about that, you're going to understand a little of the history here, some of you know it, to update you on a process that we've been working on here over the last six or seven months. And Alvin and I are going to talk a little bit about the next steps. I said we got to bring the band back together. COVID hurt us, staffing shortages have crushed us. I get to work in 24 counties, get to work with the sheriffs and the chiefs, the county commissioners and the city councils and all those. Juvenile, you know, juvenile was in death, we, we're in the death throes. Keith Brown, who was here earlier several months ago, you know, had lost so much weight, I was so worried because he was doing the work of five people and supervising the rest. So the staffing shortages have really hurt us. The raise the age has changed the whole game, and we're starting to see, see that. We've had some significant increases in crime involving adults and juveniles, especially in 2021 and 20. And we have the fallout of, of the George Floyd and the, the general mistrust of the criminal justice system. So Project Safe Neighborhoods, the number one goal, it's a national, it's the, the primary domestic agenda of the Department of Justice to reduce violence. It's got, we get about $200,000 a year in our district that we spread around to help seed programs, but community engagement was one of the primary pieces of that. It has prevention intervention as pillars of the effort that we're not, you know, we do these things over and over, and we'll see in the history of it how we've done a few of these things over and over. It has a real intentional strategic enforcement and an accountability and data piece in all of, of the four pillars. Project Safe Neighborhoods has been around since 2001. It was announced in May of 2001 by Bush Number Two. It was based on the successes of weed and seed of the Boston Gun Project for the mid, mid 90s. About a quarter of the national Project Safe Neighborhoods curriculum and processes were written based on experiences here and within about 35 miles of here, from High Point, from Greensboro, and from Winston-Salem. That was a result of Winston-Salem being a Saxon site in the late 90s and early 2000s, one of five pilot programs across the country. Everybody's got to have an acronym, we love acronyms in DC. Strategic Approaches, the Community Safety Initiative, I'm glad they ended up changing it to Project Safe Neighborhoods, a little easier. All those, you had also Project Exile in Richmond, Virginia. It was a cuff 'em and stuff 'em, put everybody in jail who's had any involvement with a gun, and you're going to reduce your homicide crime. Richmond, a little bit bigger than Greensboro, a little bigger metro area, was experiencing back in the late 90s and early 2000s, they would have 175 homicides a year, staggering even compared to the 72 that Greensboro has right now and the records that we're having here and in Durham. In any event, they cut that thing in half by putting anybody who had any involvement with a gun, they got extra people from across the country to come in, extra ATF agents, they got state's attorneys, all kinds of additional resources. And they did that for a few years, and they were able to cut their homicide rate and their violent crime rates in half, but they couldn't sustain it. The court system couldn't sustain it, they, they lost the extra resources. So all these things are spinning around as they develop this, this plan and this process of Project Safe Neighborhoods. And, you know, it was really, they found out what we've been talking about and what you all know is creating a functioning partnership across systems to develop and implement a comprehensive, you know, prevention, intervention, reentry, better use of data to, to, to reduce violent crime. So that was the history of it. It took a little while for it to kick off because 9/11, we really didn't start Project Safe Neighborhoods until 2002. Here's the history here, Forsyth Futures, we had the Saxon, we, we funded KBR and all the funding, and Alvin, you know, Sylvia Oberly, all the things at the Winston-Salem Center for Community Safety, all those things we did up through 2014 there. We were using data to inform our actions. We had it going on here. We had some of the greatest data and comprehensive work going on in the country. High Point was a little bit in front of us. We have places now that didn't get knocked down in Cabarrus County and Randolph County that have sustained 65% reductions of Part I crime using the Project Safe Neighborhoods model, using the comprehensive model. They, for some reason, were unable, urban areas weren't able to overcome, you know, some of the, the problems we've had the last several years. Some of the rural areas were, and they didn't have these spikes in crime, but they've maintained it. We had regular reviews of repeat violent offenders, we still do that. We had intentional youth outreach, we had focused deterrence, we did. We've, we've, we've talked to over 1,500 people in the city that were, that were repeat violent offenders. We've supported reentry program, we have one of the most robust reentry councils in the state. We have a bricks and mortar place at Goodwill that supports that. We don't have to pay $40,000 of rent like some of all these other places. They're paying for rent, they found a home in Goodwill. We had cross-agency teams, we had something like the Scare Team. You know, we had the cross-agency teams working our high risk, and we resulted in high levels of reduction in our Part I crime, our rapes, our robberies, our shootings, our homicides, of course. This is our time, Chairman, all right? The, the, I've watched this, been doing this for now, for 27 years, I've watched the planets align in cities when we, it's unfortunate that crisis is what ends up causing it most of the time. that crisis is what ends up causing it most of the time and high homicide numbers that are very visible and very public. But we have, I've been around this, been a lawyer here for 38 years. There has never been better cooperation between the sheriff and the chief, never. There's been good cooperation before, good relationships, and generally when the chips are down, they help each other out. You know, I'm not throwing any darts, but it's historic. Everything I go to to support the sheriff, the chief's there. Everything I go to to support the chief, the sheriff's there and they just trade off. We have historic cooperation between Chantel and Patrice at the Assistant City and County Manager level. It's never been like that as far as I could see, but we have the grant across the door that's providing mental health services. That's 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 possible. We have Atrium that may, you know, if they follow the trends of the Atlanta Violence Interruption, you know, 13% reduction of the violence of people that have been shot now that don't ever come back in the system, of the people that accept those services. I have to say, you know, I think it was 250 people they worked with, only 73 entered the program, but 13% out have not come back. And I mean, here we're chipping away. So we have the Cure Violence model. I was just at a national conference in Indianapolis, a thousand people from across the country, Tenny Gross, Newark, Chicago, all the places that have pioneered this model. The data is starting to come in on how to better implement this. Now, there was a time they say, don't work with the police. Well, they're still saying that. Don't work with the police because you can't be a snitch. However, they're saying you must use the police data to pinpoint where you allocate your assets. The data's starting to come in. I feel comfortable. We worked with UNCG for 25 years in our Project Safe Neighborhoods. I'm comfortable that UNCG is going to get those best practices, that that's cutting-edge stuff come from University of Chicago on Monday. I mean, so some of their research on where they are five, six, seven years in. We have that. We have the VIP, and that's says Victor, but you might as well say it should be Violent Impact Player. That model coming out of Tampa validated as as an evidence-based project uh practice from University of South Florida. That Violent Impact Player screen model, it's an algorithm that mines the the RMS systems from this city and the county that comes up with the the algorithm identifies and gives a point value for gang membership, current probation status, multiple convictions, gun involvement, being shot. It's able to, NIBIN hits, if you know the National Integrated Ballistic Information Network, that puts the fired shell casings in a computer that can compare shell casing seized at different crimes. It links, it has just completely narrowed the funnel down all about violence. We meet every month. The sheriff's office is involved in this. School security comes in. We talk about individuals that are involved in drive-bys and they're many times they're young. There's a 19-year-old, that's the shooter, but there's a 14- and 15-year-old that don't get charged. And you would not believe the interaction from the school security when they're hearing those names because if but for that information sharing, they don't know that those kids are running around with those guys. And they're talking about them. And of course, shockingly, those are the same kids that we're talking about here and all the intervention programs that you're doing. Those are the kids that should go to the CARES team. So we have, we have a, it's an objective identification based on violence and gun use. That is going on. It's been going on for two and a half years. And that's more in the adult arena, but I'll tell you, the algorithm in this county that identified the most violent person in this county was born in 2006. He's the number one person. He's been the number one person for about two months. He's 17 years old. He turns 18 sometime early next year. He has been involved in guns. They seize guns and they've been involved in shootings. And they're very difficult to prove. They know it. So, you know, so we're working. That algorithm is objective. It's it is identifying based on use of guns. We don't even know uh many of the demographics other than their age uh and their gang membership. We have great leadership, as I said, coming from the city and the county, the work that you did put together Cure Violence uh and putting that together as a joint operation. Well, you know, we've seen this for years and years and years. Around here, we've got everything. We've got everything already here. We have the best program. We don't need to go to Portland, Oregon to find the best after-school program. We've got good stuff here. We've got good parenting program. Parenting Path is doing some great work. All these things. We have them here and we have UNCG here to help us uh to evaluate all that. A process update. We've talked Susan Frye and Dr. Pam Peoples-Joyner. They understand this world out there of juveniles. They understand outreach. Both the sheriff and the chief had, you know, really put their assets in this community outreach to understand what's going on out there. And as a result of multiple meetings started about February, uh, March last year, we were trying to figure out how do we build the structure back up, our partnership when we used to meet in Project Safe Neighborhoods and we talked about how do we remove obstacles? How do we get to our leaders so that we can bring the best programming? How can we, you know, collaborate more and coordinate more and focus more and share data more and share information? So we started talking about this and my goal was to build it for the adults because even though the juvenile stuff's getting bad, it's still the adults. It's still 70, 85% of the crime is still committed by adults, the violent crime. It's increasing in the juvenile dramatically, but still. But we decided we could rebuild this partnership and if we did it, we could focus on juveniles because we knew that that crime rate was right raising, rising, and that we could have success because everybody wants to be at the table and prevent and intervene. So we had those series of meetings. Some of you attended those. Um, we hope to have some more. But at those meetings, uh, we told you we're going to look at what's going on out there, what programming is available because we're always talking about, are we duplicating services? Can we build the capacity? All the data that we're looking at. But then we also wanted to talk to the youth about what they needed and what uh what we might be able to do and report back to these leadership groups. So we had the two big meetings at the church where we sort of got the band back together a little bit to 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 try to more comprehensively look at these issues. And we had a series of meetings. We brought Alvin in uh to help facilitate uh that. And we started talking about technology. We saw in September, and you're going to see a little bit on that here in a minute, this map Forsyth Database. It's the, it's almost what we've been talking about for 25 years. It's almost, it's very close. Technology has caught up with our dreams. The technology wasn't able to quite do it back in the day. We've had the vision, uh, but the but that that is an output out of this. And that's a lot to be said about the county and Chantel, the leadership to step up and say, we're trying to put this asset out here together right now, you know, how can it use to to improve what your what your dreams and hopes are? And so uh that's going to be something exciting about it. We've had some early returns. We had these multiple meetings, all these groups reporting out, what do we do? Who do we do it to? How do we do it? What's our best practices? And you know, one of the outcomes out is this is the um the the mediation center, the Forsyth, oh gosh, we talked about them a couple of times. Um, a lot of youth referrals go to them. Who is it? Pride of Restorative Justice. I'm having them talk to my team, that's 24 counties deep, 12 sites across these, to talk about these concepts because we need to, we need to understand those mediation concepts and all the work we do. But so some of the early returns we have, this parenting component, and I was at a meeting with William Lassiter, they call him Billy if you know him, but he's the head of juvenile for the state. He's the deputy secretary. And 36% of juvenile parents on a self-report of people involved with the juvenile court system have reported they are incapable of supervising their children. Well over a third. That's staggering. And what we're seeing in some of these things that are funded by JCPC is that there's a parallel parenting program along with the services and the tutoring and the things. And that seems to be a best practice that we've, if we're going to have, if we're going to serve juveniles, we need to serve their parents. We need to teach them how to access resources. The need for the systems to work together. Again, 33% of the juveniles involved that are in all those numbers, those big numbers, they're involved with DSS. So if we're not in bed with DSS and the juvenile court system, we're foolish if we're not accessing those resources. Hence, the leadership again of Chantel and Patrice at the city be able to pierce in some of these, in some of these, you know, county and city-funded agencies to make sure that those those connections are being made. Transportation, every single juvenile program, transportation is a monstrous issue. And on this asset map, you're going to see where some of these assets are over here and everybody lives over here. We've been talking about that since the cows came home. But uh, you know, that's a still and remains a difficult issue. Um, the consensus from a lot of these, you know, the the programs like Project X, these high risks, which you get big payoff, you know, the the project bill, which that was based on, they have a 34% success rate in Durham over time and the most difficult population there is, the 16, 17, 18-year-old young male. And they're pulling over a third of those kids that come in that program out. You know, everybody wants 70, 80%. I'll take a third in that population all day long. But we're finding a consensus from those programming, not only here but elsewhere, that we've got to have a stipend. We cannot compete with the street. We cannot. We've got to find a way to keep these kids to stick around long enough to develop the mentor. So we're finding out then. That's some of that stuff that came out of these meetings that we were hearing anecdotal information about we might not have enough services for for middle schoolers as we develop. We've got a lot for high schoolers. We've got a lot for real, everybody at Main Street and all these really highly older because we're all focused on that 16, 17-year-old population with the raise the age, uh, but that there might not, there may be some gaps, it seemed, as we just sort of uh correlated all those information. And the recognizing that we need to build the capacity. Susan Frye has this guy that's out here in the in the street, working with these kids. He's got a relationship with somebody at Chick-fil-A. I don't know what it is. They both have strong faith. And he, I mean, between meeting number one and meeting number two, which happened a month and a half later, he had two of these kids employed at Chick-fil-A. May I serve you? May I help you developing that thing? This guy's got it going on. We've got to learn. We got to, they're out there. They've always been out there. How do we find them? How do we build their capacity? How do we give them the support and get the proper referrals to them? All right. We've got to get Alvin going. So I got to tell you quickly. So we said we were going to talk to the kids. We went over to the Boys and Girls Club. They brought 34 kids. We talked to them twice. And I I I was blown away. I'm pretty hip for 64 years old than in this world for a while. I cried on the way home. Every single kid had been homeless at some point in their life. Every single kid, this is my group, six kids, that I talked to twice. Every single one of them, the grandmother was the matriarch. When the grandmother died, the world blew up. Every single one of them had witnessed or knew somebody who'd been killed or somebody had been shot. Every single one of them knew somebody who'd been OD'd. Everybody, single one of them had seen drugs consumed at school. Every single one of them had trouble at school at some point. Every single one of them had had multiple mentors that had not followed through. They'd met them one or once or twice. Every single one of them didn't trust a doll as far as you could throw of them. And what we found, and this is confirmed, every single one of the females, and we had maybe eight or nine or 10 out of that 34, every single one of them had been sexually victimized. And that exactly correlates with what the DJ DPS, 100% of the young women that are involved in the juvenile white youth detention centers have been sexually abused, 100%. That's a humongous issue. So the trauma across the systems that these folks have suffered. But we found that they were intelligent, that they took care of each other. They had these relationships. And they wanted us to listen to what they said. And they were appreciative, especially the second time that we asked them back. They wanted some positive programs. All they do is play video games. Um, they wanted consistent mentors and they wanted consistency and stability in their lives. Go ahead.
But I'm, yeah, I'll go ahead. Uh, just to finish up, Rob was actually going to talk about this in terms of the next steps. And you know, I'm Alvin Atkinson, working with this group. But I, and I have the same level of energy as Rob, but I'm not going to show it now because we're running behind time. But the main thing is, these youth have given voice to this issue and we want to cultivate that so that we can meet them where they are and where their needs. And so uh you just saw from JCPC, the RFP in January is going to try to address more services to meet the needs of the youth. Now, I wanted to bring up Ms. Shaylee Vaughn to give you the, really, the demonstration of what we are trying to do and will do going forward. Rob told you, PSN, the partnership already has to take, they're doing what we need from the law enforcement. We needed to try to get the prevention, intervention, and treatment to come up. And the county already has been invested in this. And Shaylee, please, Jim.
Absolutely. So to go into kind of more what everyone was speaking about, let me... Do I hit stop sharing, Ashley? Okay. Just want to make sure that I don't miss anything up. Okay. So I know that there's been a lot of discussions today about resources and how we get students, juveniles, whether they've been offenders for behavior issues or just that you're trying to get them community resources all together. Um, where do you find all that information? If you're a nonprofit, if you're a parent, if you're anyone in this community that is looking for that type of information. So when Matt Forsyth was brought in initially, we spoke about how we were going to use kind of focus on mobile technology because if you think about kids today, they're not bringing around laptops. They're, they have their cell phones. Their parents are going to have their cell phones. And so we originally did like a draft demo of an application. And then um Chantel and I actually started discussing how maybe we could revamp our existing community resources application that Matt Forsyth has published and bring in the juvenile resources. And so this is actually kind of our, uh, we debuted it on Tuesday to the Bear Group. This is our resource application that includes um various resources outside of the juvenile sphere. However, we have added the juvenile resource category. So as soon as you click that, you will then be able to get services such as education, employment, health and counseling, housing and transportation, and support services. Um, those are just kind of the main categories we came up with. We can expand or, you know, combine as needed. When you hit one of these actual categories, you will get the entire list of those service providers that have included that as a description of what they do. Um, one of the big things that we also want to include in this application was accessibility to these service providers. So if you were to hit this open in Google Maps, you do immediately get the Google link and you are able to hit directions. So if you're on your mobile device, and I'll show you guys what this will look like on the phone here in a second, um, you get immediate directions. So you would be already heading to authoring action for this example. If you hit website, again, you get to learn more about them. Um, and then if we were on a mobile device, it would actually pull up their phone number immediately and you would just have to hit call. So the other thing that we really like about this application, and we um took great pains in doing myself and Will Moore on our staff at Matt Forsyth, is this search bar where you can not only do address, but you can do place or description. So if you were saying like education, for example, or legal, if anyone had put that in their description, it would show you all those resources. Um, the other big component, hopefully this shows up well. So if I say 201 North Chestnut, if I wouldn't misspell it, we would probably be in better hands. All right, 201 North Chestnut Street. We are able to see that within one mile there are 56 different um services serving the youth. And we can bump that up, down as needed. Within three miles, we have 90. And you can actually go into each of these and see more information about them. Um, just to give you a sample of another type of, let me use, trying to find our best example, Assure House, I believe, has more data. We also have this expansion so that you can see things like minimum age or maximum age of who can be um served. So that's kind of a brief overview of the website as is. I will also note that those in the community that want to add a resource or want to report an error or notify us that they've changed what they're doing or they've changed address or contact information, we automatically have surveys linked there. Um, and then the other big component to this, as I mentioned earlier, was having a mobile application. So this is how the mobile app works. And so you see, it's the same type situation. You have your dropdown menus. You can click on these and see. However, this is also available on the desktop, but I wanted to share this because if you're out as a service provider helping a youth and you want them to be able to access them or their family, you will have this share app. So you can actually use a QR code that they can scan right here. They can get an email or a link. So they can initially scan, automatically be sent to this application. And then we also have expanded it into a tablet mode. So each of your devices are capable of seeing various things. So the tablet does include the map because you have that extra space. Um, we are working on cleaning up some of the data in the backend and hope to be going live within the first part of January or February on this application.
If I may, real quick for Dudley, hopefully Ed's listening to this and he could definitely share this with the constituency. I don't know, we probably all get tens of calls a day about, you know, services. So this is definitely very helpful and thank you for doing this.
It's not live yet, but as soon as it is, we will absolutely do that. We have about two more minutes. I know we are so over on time and Mr. Alvin said he's going to wrap us up.
Yes. So you have the slide talking about next steps. We talked about what you've just done with Matt Forsyth. We also, with our school partners, we have a pilot project that we're looking at so that we can learn what's working in the school, how can we see the resources in that neighborhood? That's also going to help us, we think, not duplicate, but also find where the needs are, which will fill those gaps if we can get new programming. And then we want to create the structure and coordination that allows us to learn, use those lessons learned from the Center for the Community Safety back in 2010, 2010, when Don Mar was the superintendent. Don, we've got a nice picture of you being a superintendent. But the real key behind all this is that we want to connect and move so away from these silos and to really put this effort on this intervention and treatment and prevention and see where those overlaps are and use the data to actually help us drill down and do things that can work for our community. All this is there for us, but we got to go forward. And so these are the lessons. The commitment of you as governmental leaders, institution, to go ahead and undertake and sustain this work, not by just yes, 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 but by actions, by putting the continuity in place to sustain this effort. The other part, you just saw an example, the initiative has to be built on inherent responsibilities and actions of the agencies and institutions that are the providers of the services are funding. Matt Forsyth, there's also an opportunity to put in there that pre-K to 3, those entities that are providing that, that's the next thing, Shaylee, we're going to work on that. But the other thing is, we got to come together and coordinate the funding and development strategy so that we can know that we can make this sustainable. And so the real thing is, I wanted to share this last thing, data sharing agreements. You talked about evaluation and having that. These prevention, we got to connect the dots and get the data because you got to go where the data. And that's what this center did 2010 and it kept bringing us together because we got to have regular, formal, informal communication. But one thing that we did, that we learned, the real lesson is this, and this is the last thing. We did this then, and we say this in About the CCS, Center for Community Safety. We really got to say it about Winston-Salem Forsyth County. "We seek a community in which all people are safe to live, learn, work and play. Although our work is about measuring results, providing useful data and improving outcomes, our ultimate goal is transforming lives. We believe this can only be achieved through a powerful combination of dispassionate analysis and a passionate commitment to community-based problem-solving efforts." I said that then, I'm saying it now. Rob said, "The time is now. The time is now. Now is the most important time for us. Got to get it done. Thank you." All right. I'll give two and a half minutes.
We're happy to answer any questions. We know that this was a long segment and apologies, it's a lot of information and we appreciate you all allowing us to lift up this very important topic today. We thank our partners for being here and coming together. I think you can see there's a lot of energy and excitement and we really are all working together to break down the silos and we're committed to evaluating the work to make sure all of the things that we are funding actually provides impact to the community. So, Mr. Chairman, I will turn the meeting back over to you.
Good. Thank you very much. Need to be said?
Yes, please. I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Rob, I just wish you had a little more passion. And I will say that myself and Don and Chantel were at the meeting, May 12th and the 29th at Freeze Memorial Church. And even though we were in a Moravian church, I kind of felt like I was at a revival. It was eye-opening and I think that what is happening now is because of you and how you have brought the community together. And I certainly thank you and I thank your church members. They provided a wonderful breakfast that morning. The guys got in there and cooked it. So thank you and good luck. You are doing a great job. Thanks.
Been a busy morning. Thank everyone for coming. Appreciate the school folks for staying. The whole thing, that was very commendable and it's good. Any last things need to be said?
I did have a last comment. Please don't apologize because I think we all campaigned for this, to be up here and represent the people of this community. And I would also like to say that our children are our most vulnerable citizens and if we don't have the capacity to stay up here as long as we need to, to figure out how to build a safe community for them to live and thrive in, then shame on us. But what I will say is that this has been officially the best meeting I have attended since I've been on the county commission. And I thank you for the hard work of getting all of these great organizations together to come and inform and empower me to know how to work better with the community for the sake of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. We're adjourned until 2:00.